Doc Exxonet asked you to open in Google Docs. Okay, yeah, so the intent is definitely not to use Google Docs.
Okay, that's why you said it to me, so I thought this was some kind of a process.
It was too big, I bet, and I converted it to a Google Doc.
Cause I sent you them before.
Really?
The attachment's too big.
I sent you some photographs of Newbridge, and it said to me, "Oh, if it's too big, I'm gonna convert them to Google whatever it is."
Uh, okay.
So, this is a, there's a certain threshold.
What do you know? Do I know you had a Gmail?
I am, I don't know where, you got talk to Gmail dot org, like I have a Gmail.
You are on Gmail? Okay, yeah. So what's happening there is, if you're opening it on a Gmail too,
Are you sure?
What it'll first ask you is, do you want to open it in Google Docs?
I'm sorry, we're having three conversations.
What was your total?
Three fourteen.
Okay, mine's a little less, yeah.
Sorry, let's go back to email.
So, when you, if you open, if you're opening a Word document on a Gmail,
Yeah.
it'll first ask you if you wanna open it in Google Docs.
Yeah, it didn't do that. It came as Google Docs.
It came as a Google?
When you have the little, little icons, it said Google Docs.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, but that's, that's something I had to.
That's why I went, okay, I'm gonna be brave about this. I'm gonna try to figure out all this stuff.
Is EMI, is Alicia coming?
As I know it, yes, Alicia is coming. But there are four of you, you can start.
She needs Google Docs and watch more of the world.
Alright, so it's seven thirty-two, and we'll open the planning board meeting tonight. First item on the agenda, is there any comments from the public on topics that aren't on our agenda? Having none, let's go to the first item, which is EMI on the review intake procedures.
Okay, so what we wanted to do here is just, kind of as a refresher for those of you who have been on the board for a while, and for a introduction for those of you who are new, we wanted to come, and as an opportunity to kind of take a look at how we're doing things, and, you know, any chances to optimize them. We're gonna go over basically, kind of what the fir-, one of the first steps we do in, in, um, when we get a site plan approval, and I, we have this outlined here on our town website, is basically, you schedule an intake meeting with Kim, Dana, Dave and myself, and we go over the plans before we even get a site visit. We review them for completeness, we review them for, you know, we go over the basics there, you know, how much, how many lumens is your lighting, do you have an irrigation well? Sometimes when we say that, people look at us like, what, we have to have an irrigation well? But, you know, we break the bad news there. And, you know, then we take a more qualitative look at what they're doing, you know, what, is there a, you know, is there, Kim looks at the landscaping, is it sufficient? You know, there are times when, you know, for the most part applicants with this, you know, they'll take the feedback, they'll make changes. Not, not always, sometimes they'll decide to stick on a particular issue, and, and that happens. Um, you know, I'll look at like five Colchester is a particular one. I told them, "Why isn't the house turned slightly so it works more with the grade?" They didn't wanna do that. We saw what happened with that, right? You know, so. That's, sometimes it happens, sometimes, you know, we tell people, "Come back with something else." But a lot of times, you know, we have people here who work in the town who are familiar with what the board wants, and, you know, they're pretty close a lot, a lot of times when they're familiar with what goes on here. Um, I can tell you, the first intake meetings I do, and honestly, still up until now, I lean a lot on Kim and Dave, cause they've done this a lot more than I have. And so, for this presentation, I'm gonna do the same thing. I'm gonna lean on Kim and Dave, and tell them, tell you what they look at.
Alright, so, you know, first off, you have to kind of also remember the context. There's nothing that precludes someone from, like, in a vacuum, preparing all their documents, walking up to the town clerk and dropping off and saying, "I'm filing." So they don't have to do it. It's strongly encouraged, and we can't, we can't make them, we can't like, really reject them because they didn't, you know, show up with the game. Uh, but it's, it's generally appreciated, the effort.
So how do they know about this process?
It's on the website. It's pretty strongly worded, like, it's, you know, it's, it says it's like the first,
Yeah.
the initial, you know, initial meeting. So, and usually, any sort of like filing, um, we don't have any people who I think, you know, do stuff in a vacuum. The days of, everyone knows, well past the days of, you know, in towns like Weston, Newton, where you basically roll up with a building permit, like, you know, there's gonna be some sort of research going on for it first. You're also, I think you're, uh, your GIS, um, town GIS also flags a lot of stuff that gets kicked right from the window right to a MI too, right?
It's not quite there yet, but we're working on those layers, you know, it does, we do have scenic roads on the GIS. We, and we do have all this info here too.
And then building permits that are, you know, properties that are already under town, town, um, planning board review, or need further approval, usually, will generally, if they're of a certain age, will get kicked over. You know, cause in years past, we actually had issues where, you know, legitimate issues, people coming in and doing additions on stuff that's, you know, still supposed to be at the planning board per view, and, and just getting a, getting a permit, and then trying to deal with it that way, like, oops, you know, like, what are we supposed to do?
But isn't it such that when they try to pull the permit through the inspector, and he will say, "You have to go to the planning board"? I mean, he's, he's a catch man.
For them, yes.
Yes.
I mean, years past, that wasn't, wasn't always the issue, again, cause it was just, you know, town records hadn't caught up to it, and, and, you know, so we would have some full starts. That being said, once they're in, um, we generally just had to look at their project in an overview, and, like, flag any major, just have to flag any major issues. You know, uh, there's stuff we know the board doesn't like, you know, two driveway openings, lots of pavement, you know, things like that. I mean, we, we can, we can tell them, it's gonna be a bad reaction. Like I said, they don't always listen, some of them, some folks think of it as, um, like a game of poker, right? Like, you know, well, I'll give that back, or something like that. Others are just, and others honestly just want what they want. You know, in, in, you know, sometimes the difference is, is it being built for a particular owner? Or is it gonna be like a spec house? You know, the people who are building a spec house don't tend to push back as much for some of those issues, as long as they can still, in their mind, maintain the value. Someone who's building their dream home, and their dream home includes, you know, a lot of stuff that might be a flyer for the planning board, is not gonna generally be this way, so that's, you know, sometimes that's what we see. You know, so we, we try to, we try to pick the major issues out and like focus on those. I also have to, like, we do see a lot of the same consultants. And I have to say that I think a lot of the pre-screening goes on with those consultants too. So before it even gets to us, sometimes, like, they've flagged issues and toned things down, or, you know, you know, come up with solutions that, you know, will be more palpable.
So you, you have a lot of, um, the applicants frequently use the exact same consultants, or the same engineers, and so these people are real first, so that helps a lot.
Yeah, or that landscape architects, or the architects, I mean, they all usually come to the initial meeting, so they all usually will have, you know, they, you know, it won't always be, you know, the same three civil engineers or something like that, but chances are it's LA, who's been in front of us, who's prepared the site plans, or an architect who's had to react to like building massing or something like that, who's sat through the stuff. In years past, it used to be building, we used to see like same builders a lot. We don't really see that as much anymore, except maybe like Mark Stanford, you know, guys like that.
But if, but if we do get some new blood here, it's a good thing, cause we don't wanna keep funneling the same work and same people, cause they think, the world thinks they have an end with the board, which is never a good thing. That there is a prescribed route that they can follow without having to know someone. For instance, there's hopefully a checklist that goes with the intake process.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's an application list, but then, is there anywhere where they can get, know that we have recommended landscaping practices online? I don't know where else we can put recommended or board recommendations for, I don't know, landscaping, you know,
Yeah, there's like a, there's like a four, there's like a four-page checklist that used to, and I'm not even sure if it's still.
We have guidelines online.
So that's something that a newbie can, can, can take a look at, and be just as prepared as anybody, somebody who's been around the track a couple of times can do.
Plus all the, all the application submitted materials that get posted, so we often like just direct them to those.
Yeah, see what everybody else is doing.
You know, someone's, say cross-sections, for example, a lot of times, they'll be asking about the cross-section, so if you're just doing one way, it's exaggerated, someone like, no, look, and we'll, usually just give an example of like a cross-section that can pull off the town website. Usually it's just the last one that we saw, cause of memory or whatever. But it's like, yeah, just, this is what's.
Pull up the checklist.
Yeah.
The other important thing that I think board members should understand is that by the time you guys see these projects at the sidewalk, Dave and I have already looked at them sometimes three times, and done three rounds of changes. So, you know, again, it's sort of our combined experience of seeing however many projects we've seen over the course of the last few decades. We have a pretty good understanding of what you're looking for, and what the town's looking for, so, um, that's good information, I think, for you to have. It's not, this isn't new to us, we've already seen it several times by the time you look at it.
Who takes a look at the architectural sort of massing impact on the?
We, we do, and you know, we look at that less for style and materials, as just as we look at it as, you know, okay, you've, you've got a three-story base there, you're going to need to screen that idea.
Yeah, I mean.
Or a lot of glass, you know.
Yeah, I mean, usually, to be honest, because I am not a town employee, I'm a consultant, and I've also been doing this a lot, and have like probably the least tolerance, and I'm probably the frankest at these meetings. And then, so for like the architecture, what I often say, if they kind of show us an elevation, I'll say, "Look, I'm not an architect and engineer, I can't articulate why, but they're not gonna like that." You know, and, and, cause sugar coating it at the, does not help. You know, like, like, it, it just, it, it doesn't, because this, these are, I mean, these are very expensive, this is a very expensive process. And to like sugar coat something, and then have someone, and this is all through experience, someone like hear the good and not the bad, and come back with, you know, just a different paid scheme or something, I mean, that's, that's thousands of dollars, they just.
And it's very frustrating to the applicant too.
Yeah, so, um, you know, the architecture piece, I, I'd say, we're generally pretty good about knowing what you, what will be, you'll react to, but sometimes have a hard time articulating the particulars of it. You do get surprised sometimes. And also, there's also, there's also the ones where like, you know, I know you're not gonna like the architecture, but also no one's going to see it. So, you know, and, you know, and frankly, I'll tell the, I'll tell the clients, like, they're not gonna like it, but once they digest it and understand that no one's gonna see it, and you can think of some specific ones, like, there's some very, you know, ones that like, you know, no one can see that, you know, that, it just is, you know, it's nothing, nothing you would ever put on like your design guidelines. But, you know, once that, you kind of digest through that part, you're like, alright, well, no one's gonna see this castle in the woods, and, you know.
Is that the checklist up there?
That's the checklist.
So that basically just says, this is everything you've gotta have, but doesn't really give you any recommendations for the quirks, or the?
No, the guidelines are separate.
Okay.
Yeah, he had those, uh.
Oh, I missed that, sorry.
Yeah.
See design guidelines, there you go.
So.
When did we last update the design guidelines?
Substantively, it's been before I came here. Format-wise, I've updated these. So this, this was all like a written document. I've put this on here, you know, and hopefully like a much easier to find way.
I see.
Picture icons, good.
Landscaping.
Yeah, we can add some more information. And that's called design guidelines, okay?
Guidelines.
No, I mean, I think they've sort of, I mean, there's very specific things we cover with them, right? So lumens, not just the thresholds, but does it make sense, is it in keeping with the neighborhood context? Everything starts from your bylaw, right? Everything starts from, is the new development any more impactful on the neighbors and the public than it is today? And that's how we kind of frame everything we say. So there's a reasoning behind it, that's not just five people are gonna say, "I don't like the color." You know, there's an actual charge that you guys are, you know, driven by. So, and, and then we look at things like dark sky compliance, and actually the California,
Title twenty-four, yeah?
Title twenty-four, we're trying to shift into that as opposed to just the dark sky. Things like irrigation, which is very new, to have the well, we have not caught those as much historically as we have in the last year or two. Generators, we always ask about.
We always just actually encourage them to.
To quit them.
Hold on.
Yeah, or at least have one approved, even if they don't install it, so that we know we've met that guideline, and they don't have to come back before the board.
Sometimes there's confusion about the RGFA. You know, they think it's a cap and not a trigger, and things like that, you know, so, some, you know, and then, the, you know, they, you know, percentages, sometimes they get, they, you know, they think the percentage is a cap, the ten percent of, you know, so, a lot of times, once we get to more of the end thing, we'll look at like their RGFA, what are you counting here? We'll say like, "Look, what's going on on the third floor?", you know?
Yeah.
Cut, it, it, count that space. I don't wanna, I look, you know, it, it, more often than not, for some reason, like, they're just like, "No, we're not. We don't need it, it's only like four feet wide, it's just an attic." You know, others, others, you know, will, will end up adding that in. I'm like, "The house is gonna be the house." You know, this is, um, you know, the number isn't as important as its impact on the neighbors and the, and the land.
Don't write something in stone now that will cause a new owner to have to come back before the board within six to twelve months, because it, for something like that, where the shell of the house is what it is, and we've already dealt with the impacts on the voters and the public, it doesn't make sense for them to hide that number.
And do a new filing, or.
Right.
So, you know, similar to like the patios, you're seeing on like the, uh, uh, like the spec houses, like these like little tiny, like, you know, I'm like, "Look, don't design it, don't build it," but put a big note on the plan that says, "You're gonna have this much more prerogative, make your coks work for that," so that these new folks can come in, and they want their cooking area, and that. That can just happen with a building permit, and not a, you know, a filing, a night meeting, that's, you know, it's, it's just been long enough that we've all forgotten what it was, so we gotta go back there, you know, that type of thing.
So after an intake meeting, is there typically a turn on the design?
So we actually, I don't, we historically kind of do pre-submission meetings and then intake meetings.
Yes.
So, we have kind of a first gut check of, they don't have everything compiled yet, but here it's kind of a working session.
Yeah.
So there's like a pre-intake meeting?
We call it pre-submission.
Yeah.
Pre-submission.
So like one hundred Meadowbrook, they came to me, um, like at least three times before then they sat down with Kim and Dave. And the first pass they came around, they had four-foot-high retaining walls in the setback, they were cutting all the way to the top. You know, so we cut them down from there. When they came back the next time, you know, they, they had improved, and when they came, then they were fully compliant, and, you know, so there's, there's a series of tweaks that go on. Again, also consultants who know when things are gonna be problematic will come to us in advance.
And, and bring, and bring their client so that we can have that discussion. And they don't, there's no like, uh, they're not like reaching out before us to tell us what the situation is. You know, cause, cause, you know, they, we generally give the same spiel, they know like, you know, once we see something, they express the idea, like, we're gonna like start to flag stuff, you know.
So EMI, we got a couple minutes left. Did we achieve what you wanted to achieve in talking about this?
Well, the other, the other thing I wanted to cover that we do in intake meetings too, is we try and get them to do a format that presents well. Um, I'm thinking of like seventy-five Scotch pine, that was a huge property, right? A lot of tree removals on that, and a lot of levels of tree removals. There were tree removals that were, because the trees were, were dying in bad, there were tree removals for the house footprint itself, there were tree removals in septic. So, you know, we went, um, we went through with the consultant and said, "Okay, color code it all like this, and put it on four different sheets," so that, you know, you're not just saying, you know, "We're removing a hundred eighty trees." That's not really, that's just a shocking number, but it doesn't really do much beyond that, so.
Stuff like that, we try to, we try to have them chop it up into digestible bits for you guys. Right? So that, like something like that, you can look at the blue trees, which are the dead dying trees, and mentally check those off. Now, we don't, again, we don't preclude you guys from going in a different direction, or we never, we never tell anyone that we, you know, this is what the board will do, or anything like that. But, you know, you're gonna see these things for like, you know, half an hour, you need to be able to kind of like, something like that, which can be overwhelming in a public hearing with other stuff going on, I think mentally be able to kind of chop it up.
Right, right.
But that kind of thing is really helpful to us, I know that. So my little question always is, um, it seems to me that our sidewalks have gotten to be way down in the weeds, and that we're out there doing like a full presentation for an hour, and so I would like if we could somehow tighten those up a little bit, and will we really concentrate on the site? Because as you said, we've already talked about lumens, we've already talked about this. I mean, it's pretty interesting to find out what you all cover, it's really a lot more than I thought. And you've really polished and worked with people to get them to a certain point, so what would you say we should concentrate on at a sidewalk?
Well, I, for the, for a format of a sidewalk, I would say, I would, cause sometimes what happens is, you know, the whole team comes out, the, you know, the advocates team, they all kind of, they.
Wanna be early.
And they do a full presentation?
It's early, like, you know, they've probably gotten up extra early to get to wherever. You know, what I would say is, I'd like to see the four elevations of the house, because I need to know in context what's going to go on there, so I can know like.
Maybe the site plan, four elevations.
Yeah, I, I'd almost like to see like the four elevations, just up there, just for context, not going into them or anything like that. And then walk us through the site plan. Right? Like, and then do that in ten minutes, and then let's walk.
Site plan will include grading, topography, all of that. Cause re-grading is often a big thing, as far as where they're moving dirt around, what's gonna remain, what's gonna get moved. Cause for me it is, and that's something I'd like to see on site.
I mean, they, I mean, we can just make them aware that they need to be able to, to, um, you know, off the fly, go through their elevation.
What about the land elevation?
Land, yeah, the house elevation.
Right, actually, yeah.
The full site plan.
I mean, cause often a lot of these houses are up very high, and that's a problem. And, you know, noles are missing, where things are getting filled in the land, and it's really helpful to understand what that means on site.
But what, I mean, what are you guys looking for in this? I mean, to me, when we do the site visits, I wanna see the site, so that's what I like.
That's the emphasis.
That's it, because I, I don't have the ability to look at a plan and say, "Oh, I get exactly how close this place is." You know, it's hard for me to imagine twenty feet, forty feet, sixty feet, and I have to be there and see where it's actually staked out to be, and I, I'm kind of visual that way, cause I'm, I'm not good at reading a site plan.
You know, I. Let me make a suggestion here, we're, we're running out of time on this topic. But one of the reasons to talk about the intake meeting was to see what happens at the intake meeting, so it can be more effective for the sidewalk, so that we can be more effective here in this setting here. And maybe next time we talk about the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So maybe, uh, we talk a little bit more about what people want with the sidewalk. Maybe EMI, you document that for us, and you say, "Here's my, to the sidewalk, to approve the sidewalk."
Sounds good.
So let me just have a conversation about that. So anything else? Any questions from people about the intake meetings? If it was news to you, who knows? Okay, great. And anything else, EMI, just give you a last chance.
Before I forget, I'll give you, because I, I just won't remember, but at the sidewalks, we shouldn't talk about lighting at all.
Or floor plans.
Or floor plans, right, right.
Yeah.
There you go, okay. Did I conclude the discussion?
Just in the interest of time.
I mean, that makes sense.
Just in the interest of, like, lighting, we can always fix, like, we don't need to spend that out.
Right.
This concludes.
Ticks it.
Yeah, and the summer it's too cold, and in this, I mean, summer you can tick, winter it's too cold, there's always a reason to get off the site.
This concludes.
Okay.
Let's move on to our public hearing, two thirty-five Wellesley Street, Regis College Special Permit Camp for Wahaha School Camp.
Sorry, Jean here?
So do we have the checklist?
Yeah.
Hi Jean, I'm Toby Glenn.
Steve Oppenheimer. And I'm a trustee of Wahaha Schools, Wahaha Schools is a.
Love the name. Sounds like you're stuttering.
You know, it's, it's, it's an unfortunate name in English, but it actually goes well in Chinese, because it's, the school was founded by the company, which is the largest family-owned company in China. And Wahaha brand is very powerful in China, but really it's kind of a facility to stay here. But anyway, uh, the school is a K through nine international environment, it's very located in Hangzhou, which is an hour southwest of Shanghai, Shanghai, Montreal. Uh, we operate in the camp this summer, uh, for our rising sixth, grade six, seventh, and a few, bringing eight grade students. Uh, the purpose of the camp is primarily to do one week of studies in international MIT on experience learning at hands-on learning. Uh, the following week, we're doing a week onsite at Regis. We will be doing social studies and English literature in grade, uh, and taught by two teachers from the old school. And then the following week, we will be touring around Austin, so that when we learn the social science studies class, we'll have a chance to experience firsthand. The students arrive on the seventh of July, and they'll be leaving on the twenty-seventh of July. There are eighteen students in total, uh, seven teachers accompany them, which is a very large number of teachers, but we feel it's very important that we have as much English infusion in that program as we can. Let me see, five of the teachers come from our school in China, two of them are Americans, so they're Chinese nationals. And then we have two, one, we have two students, one who's a recent graduate of Concord Academy, and another one who is just graduated from college, who will be their kind of playmates in English while they're here. And organize afternoon activities, teach them how to throw a football, how to play T-ball, all the important things like. And, uh, after our students leave us at ninth grade, a fair number will go into boarding school programs, and the, and English, we can, not necessarily in the United States, although that's a favorite spot. But also we have students in the UK, Australia, and not in Canada, it's too cold for our students up there. But, uh, so that's pretty much the nature of the program. The first week, we will be traveling to MIT by bus in the morning, and returning in the afternoon.
So they're living in Regis?
They're living in Regis, yeah, they're living in Regis. The first week, they're studying at MIT, and then coming back and living in Regis. The second week, we will not have a bus, the students will be living and studying right at Regis. And then the third week, once again, they'll be getting a bus, going into Boston in the morning, having a wonderful time there, hopefully learning something, and then coming back home, probably after dinner in the evening. So we don't anticipate that it'll bring a lot of traffic to that area, because we'll have a car for emergency, but, um, nobody catches a fever and has to go to the emergency department, we won't be using.
Where, where are all the students coming from?
They're coming from Hangzhou.
Okay, they all live there?
Yeah, they all live there, they're all these.
Just a summer, yeah. And how, how, how did they choose to come here first?
Well, they have to test it, which is great, so they're based on recommendations from their teachers, and he also tests their engines.
So can we say that? Yeah, just the, how it all fits into, I mean, I assume.
The spreadsheet.
Yeah, the spreadsheet. Regis certainly is on top of how many people.
Well, I, I think we can just work at the back sheet now, because last year, the peak week was four ninety-four. Cause Lynx was in operation, they're not in operation anymore, so the business week we have with this camp is one eighty-nine compared to four ninety-four.
Wow, yeah, okay.
And then the passenger bus should be no problem with the traffic.
Does a one eighty-nine include Wahaha?
Yeah.
Be careful, you don't deserve any bad traffic.
And the buses down on time, just be aware of that.
Yes, yes, I, my sister lives in Weston, I live in Acton, so we know, do know the traffic compared to Boston.
And do the counselors, did the staff all stay on onsite?
Yes, everybody's onsite with the students.
So we don't have them traveling every morning?
No, the only people who will be traveling are the two teachers for that one week, but then the bus will be traveling.
That's it.
Pretty normal for this episode.
Any other questions? David?
Is this the first time you've come to fourth permanent?
Yes, yes, we hope it's not the last time. I hope this is a success, and you have an opportunity to come back.
So did we do a shorter permit for first time, so we can?
Yes, the three-year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can we, uh, we'll have a decision?
June nineteenth?
June nineteenth.
Could I go through?
Great. Good luck.
Not so much classes, maybe, but you don't want to say.
Thank you very much.
So we're on to, uh, forty-four Oak Street. Is that right? If we have, uh, is that right?
That's right.
Next. Hi, KT. All right, you guys want to come up front with the screen? Hey, how are you?
Good.
Yes, Mr. Peng, is, is that my ma, too?
Yes.
Okay, do they want to set up friends? Okay. Good to see you. So we have a, a challenging situation, and whenever I face a challenging situation, I put together a PowerPoint. So, um, I'm gonna, uh, review, would you mind introducing yourself? That'd be great.
Yeah. KT Peng, architect.
Great.
This is, uh, Mrs. Peng, Omer, and then Mr. Peng, Omer.
Mr. Peng?
Peng, yeah.
P.
P E N G.
P E N G, that's my, yeah, great. So I'm gonna walk through the situation. We did a sidewalk, and I thought it was challenging enough that we would have an, an offline meeting. And, and an offline meeting, I think it's very productive, I hope you still agree.
Sure.
Um, but I'm gonna walk the planning board member and the audience here through what the timeline is. And, um, and some of the resolutions, and I want the planning board to feel comfortable with that, and want to hear from, from the audience, too. We have a neighbor here, is that right? Bill?
Yes.
Oh, hi, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Thanks for coming. So the timeline was, without time on it. There was a site plan approval with conditions granted for this new house on Seany Brook, which was about.
Twenty sixteen, I believe.
It was twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, great. So, uh, it turns out, the house was built, and after a little bit of confusion, a temporary occupancy permit was issued. I want to, I'm gonna look at you for your, this is all correct so far, Dana, that's correct. Uh, and then the owner applied for a permit to add a sunroom to the house. Right, great, we're on board. Um, and then, in the examination in sidewalks and such of the house, the town discovered eight significant violations of the original approval. I have permit there, it should say approval. And then we said, okay, let's talk, right? And we talked last week in an offline meeting. And in the meeting was, uh, myself and Dana and KT and Mr. Peng.
Yes.
Right? And EMI helped out bit times when we needed some senior advice. And, uh, we reviewed all the violations, and then we all proposed some resolutions, and I think we agreed on resolutions to each. And then, so, what I want to do with the planning board today is review the offline agreement, and sort of upgrade to a planning board-wide agreement. Make sure you guys are on board. If you have any concerns, I would obviously voice them. And then, assuming the planning board would be on board that, um, after the resolutions are completed and confirmed, uh, the town will issue a permanent occupancy permit and consider the new permit for the, is it a permit for adding the sunroom to the house?
Yeah, an amendment.
An amendment to the site plan approval. Is that okay with, are you good with that?
Yes.
Is that a good process to follow? I'm looking at you for acknowledgement, because there's been misunderstandings in the past, and I just, for everybody's sake, I want to make sure we're at a good spot here. And Bill, are you, is that okay with you so far?
Yep, yeah.
Okay, great, cause I know you've been very affected by it, I want to be sensitive to that. Okay, so let's go through it. So the violations, and we'll walk through these one by one, is, there's, uh, pillars that were unapproved at the driveway entrance. And the resolution to that, that we agreed to, was there to be removed. Uh, there is a curb extension, uh, that sort of flared out into the road that was not approved.
Is that the driveway flare?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
We have pictures there.
We have pictures, we're gonna step through.
Okay, good, that was probably we have.
We're gonna step through every one of these, including the resolution. So that's gonna be cut per the plan, the original plan.
Okay.
The rock wall, um, was really a rock wall versus a stone wall. And that's gonna be replaced per, uh, an example, it's gonna be really augmented, not completely replaced. So they'll keep some of the big rocks and augment it with small stones. And we have a picture of, um, a model of what they're going to follow.
Okay.
A model that we've approved before. Uh, the plantings were insufficient, didn't match the plan, basically, so, um, those are gonna be improved per the, per the landscape plan. Do we have a copy of that landscape plan?
Yes, you can go through it.
Okay, that'd be good. Uh, and then they have a, um, the driveway, permeable paved driveway extension, um, and that's gonna be cut back to what the original plan was.
Okay.
And then there was the irrigation hose, uh, kind of hanging out, it's sort of worried us that they were gonna attach to, uh, to, to water supply.
Is there a side well now?
And they're gonna, it's gonna be connected and proposed to sidewalks.
So one hasn't, there isn't one now?
There isn't one now.
Okay.
Someone's gonna be built. And so, on the extended patio and the fire pit, given all that, uh, the extended patio, and Dave has done an analysis, at least preliminary analysis of the patio. He's not concerned about permeable issues, right?
No, not for that.
Okay, so, I, I tended to think that we could approve that to stay, as well as the fire pit. So let's walk, let's walk through it. So there's pillars that are to be removed.
So, so when they get, they get removed, basically the mulch will be there, or plants, or something else? They go all the way down?
They go all the way down, okay, yeah, that's the, right, KT?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
That's the driveway.
Yeah, that's the driveway, that's just, we're just looking at the pillars there.
Whether you put two bushes, or whether you put more mulch, doesn't matter.
What did the original landscape plan have there instead of pillars? Just do your.
Nothing.
Nothing, okay, so nothing.
It's just determinants, right?
Terms of the wall.
Just determinants of the wall.
Yeah, right. Okay, next. And the curb extensions, is that the flaring out will be removed?
Okay, so what will go in instead? I mean, is it gonna be dirt, is it gonna be mulch, is it gonna be mud, is it going to be?
You mean, what, what replaces the flare?
Right, I mean, there's a gravel bed underneath it, right, so that's not just.
To the right.
It's not just the dirt, it's also the gravel base will come out, or, I, I don't know, I'm trying.
What's to the right and left of it? Is it just, is it dirt?
I think she's talking about underneath the pavers.
No, I understand, so that'll be replaced by, I think, whatever's to the right of it.
Well, maybe we just need to take a look at the landscape plan and what it was, and say that's what it should have been. Maybe that's the way to go.
You, you, you're just talking the surface cover, what's that? Those little triangles are gone, I would assume would just be whatever's shown on the landscape plan. Now, if that was existing to remain, then it.
Which it would be. That's what I'm trying to see.
That's why I'm operating. Side of way, so that would just be normal with western roadside.
Exactly. And I'm, I guess, what I don't want to see is a gravel bed.
Right.
Yeah, you don't want to see a gravel bed, I, I think you wanna, you wanna stabilize it too, so it doesn't trap onto the road, so.
I mean, if, if, if it were me, I would take the granite stones that surround the edges, and I'd bring them in to hold the pavers, which you actually probably have to do anyways to keep the pavers from moving.
And you're taking these now?
Granite strip there. Everybody's in the right way.
Do you get this, KT?
What do you have, it's something edging.
I think you need the edging to make sure those pavers don't migrate. That's my understanding of how those.
Yeah, there's, there's edging there already.
Right, and when that gets cut, you just take that edging.
Right.
Put it there, yeah.
Right, exactly.
You're good.
You got that?
And it's good.
Okay, got it. So it moves the edging out?
Right.
So remain edging.
Yeah, we use, we use existing edging and do without flare.
Exactly, that's good already, I like that.
I just want, I'm gonna say this as an aside, we typically probably don't want to get into construction methods of contractors under your purview.
Yeah, yeah.
Just as a side note.
Right, and I would, I absolutely agree with you, it's only in this instance, because they're putting it back to the original, which we all know is sort of an interesting thing to try.
Okay, move on. The rock wall, there's a, as, rock wall versus stone wall. That wasn't as specified, so why don't we turn the music louder?
I have a nose, I have a nose, I am.
Okay, that's good. Let's talk to them.
Break.
Come on, break.
All right, come on.
What do you have to say about the rock wall? Okay, so there's a rock wall as built, and then this is what we've agreed to, will be proposed to manage, something like that, okay? So that's the model we're following.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I think that can support some of your bigger, you were concerned about taking out, taking out the huge boulders, can the boulders fit in there?
Yeah, I think you should go make that work, you should see a more big one than little, and it's actually a very nice wall.
That's a discussion that we had.
Yep.
Uh, robe trees insufficient planting, so do you have what that's going to be?
Yeah, I can pull it up.
Okay. Did you zoom in? Cam, can you walk us through that?
Yep. So the intent is to take out every few, right now there's a straight line of arborvitae there.
The soldiers, they go.
Right. So instead of taking all of them out, or every other one out, they're taking out kind of clusters and putting in other things in their place. It's not gonna be perfect, but it will be better.
Which ones are coming out, are they all red ones or?
So the red is what's new, so these will come out, and the roadie will go in here, 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 and here, and then there's, they're adding in taller trees here, here, and here. So that, they're just trying to naturalize it a bit.
It's only one of those trees coming down with soldier line?
Uh, you can't really see, I can zoom in, but there's a bunch, actually.
So I don't know how many there are, are there ten, twelve?
This one's being moved up, this one's being moved over.
See the dotted?
No, unfortunately.
No, I'll cut to see, there's like five or six. Yeah, there's.
So this one is coming out and being moved back. This one and this one are coming out, and there's a roadie and a taller tree going in.
Are those going, we, we relocated anywhere? Those two that are coming out? They, they're good trees, might as well, we use them somewhere.
This one's getting moved back?
Right.
These two are coming out.
Right, that's, that's where I ask, those two that are coming out, are they going anywhere?
Um, looks like there's two over there, I think they're getting moved over to the side.
Okay.
This one's coming out and getting moved back.
How, when they move back, how far back is that, like three feet?
What's the scale of this?
It almost looks like, I mean, I, I think it'd be a leap of width on a tree.
It's more like six.
It's like, you have the distance of the mature tree, it's probably six feet.
If it's moving six feet, that's fine, like, I can't quite tell.
And then.
Oh.
One, two, three, four are coming out. This one's, one's getting pushed back, this one's getting pushed back. So we, there, there's four coming out, I think there's two being relocated there, I don't know what happens to the other two.
So you're introducing randomness.
Four up here.
Right, which is good, but I just want to make sure it's, you know.
And three over there, so they're adding some and moving some around.
Okay.
So you're satisfied, Cam?
I'm satisfied, we've gone over this.
Okay, more than once, really?
Both had it.
I appreciate it. All right, so Leslie, the?
Yeah, that makes good sense.
Okay, let's go back.
Well, if you ask one question, there's a circle in the front now, which I don't remember, comes off the walkway.
That was the original approved, that they're not doing.
Okay, well, what is it though?
It was a, like a little, like.
Water fountain or something.
Can we put, can we put?
A planting.
Can we put an effort, erase that and take it off the plan? Since this is really not the original plan anyways, the original plan stands, and this is a revision to the original plan, so we should take that off.
Right, yeah. Uh, it was just a comparison, but I'd take it off.
Right, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Can I go back to my plan PowerPoint now?
Yes.
Okay. And that's being removed, the permeable paved driveway, right?
All of it?
No, it's being cut back.
Cut back. Comes back to the original, the actual.
Yeah, we bring that, so.
It's about, um.
So the original approved was this, this line here and this line here that went like that.
Yeah.
What was built was this, so they want to cut that back to the original approved.
Right.
So it's gonna extend the driveway by maybe four or five feet, as opposed to.
As opposed to.
Twelve.
Yeah, and the reason for this is the turnaround issue of the.
Yeah.
And this is the same amount of pervy.
And there's room to plant.
Now, there's room to put rhododendron somewhere.
Okay, that was the big deal, there was not gonna be room to plant now.
Yes.
So, oh, this, this is closer to the original, but it's not the original because the driveway's in a different place, et cetera, et cetera. But it's the same amount of impervial, impervious surface that was original?
Yes.
Close enough to folk music? I didn't see government work.
Yeah, well, no, that's a new one, I haven't heard.
Folk music?
I haven't heard folk music, I've heard government work.
And this is being hooked up to a well, well's being built, this will be hooked up to a well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Next.
Was, I'll show you the location.
Oh, good, good.
It's right next to the park.
Okay.
That's a new one that's gonna be built.
Yeah.
Great picture.
Have you done?
The, the last two we're going to allow to stay is the patio extension, which is about how much of an increase, Dana?
I should have figured that out, but. Oh, it's, um, they gave it the number at one point, it was like two ninety, two hundred feet, maybe? Square feet?
Yeah, yeah, about two, two hundred.
What percent increase does it?
Overall, slight impervious or overall?
No, just the patio, how much bigger a patio.
I think you're looking about twenty percent, cause it was eight ninety-eight on the original.
Yeah, twenty percent. And then the fire pit, you can see in this picture as well. So that was my offline experiment with the team. And, uh, KT, we're good with everything that we've reviewed?
Yeah, so much is good, yes.
And Mr. Peng, is good with that? Great. Okay, so I'll turn to the board and, you know, figure out your comments, any concerns or comments you want to share about this.
No, I guess if we can, you've done a good job with everybody. And, and, and there is the issue with that neighbor, I mean, if we're putting lower, um, blocking roadies, or how, how are we gonna actually make this? Well, so this is where we get kind of into the weeds, because if you're separating.
Literally.
Out, right, if you're separating out the proposed sunroom, we had them put in more tall screening hemlocks.
Right.
Along the back corner between the butter, in reaction to the sun porch, but that's not what we're talking about tonight.
Right, right. Where were you talking about, uh, this is hard to do, but if you're talking about the sunroom, where were you putting the extra trees?
It's all of this up here.
Okay, but that can be a different matter, that's not interfering with what we're discussing today, right?
Right, right, correct.
Okay.
But say, the sunroom is still on tape somewhere.
Those plantings are above and beyond what was part of the original.
Exactly, that's a, that's a separate issue that we'll talk about.
Because we're anticipating the sun.
Right.
Those, those are the ones around the front, the ones around the front are only five or six feet tall, right?
Oh, you can't...
No, the, the, the other ones are hemlocks.
How tall are they?
Uh, ten, twelve.
Okay.
Yep, 'cause that's the only thing, is I assume that after, we're all compliant with this.
Exactly.
Well, I'm just asking, I thought they were the ones being transplanted.
Right, I mean, I'm frustrated too.
Or us to have to like, deal with this anymore. So, that's my comment.
Okay, Steve?
I'm good, why, why was the, um, greenhouse separated from the sunroom?
Um, 'cause we wanted to get this to compliance and then consider the permit. That's why.
Okay.
I got two things.
So, they're coming back?
Exactly, they'll come back, exactly.
Um, there was planting and work done in the buffer zone, which was ConCon's buffer zone. And I don't know where that's going. I mean, there are trees planted, I'm not gonna say unplant them. Um, there, and I guess the question is, why don't, ConCon has said, I guess it's okay. So, all I can do is, I guess, ask that you don't do any more work in that buffer zone. And...
Can you point to the buffer zone we're talking about?
It's past, it's past, it's right back there.
It's right on there.
Right there.
So, Katie, do you know what she's talking about?
Yes, we, yeah, we understand, we moved those trees back outside the buffer zone. Yeah, we understand.
No, I'm not sure we do. They were inside the buffer zone, so you're gonna move them?
No, no.
You're leaving them?
No, we moved out of the buffers.
Yeah, he moved them out of there.
Like, uh, months, uh, last meeting or previous meeting.
So, these are regular trees, these are conifers, these were regular trees. I don't know, they look ornamental crab apples or whatever.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the...
Why don't you, why don't you...
Do you have a, or do you have a...
Help me, yeah.
We are talking about these trees or, or those, those trees?
Yeah, when...
Those are...
Work was done in the, in the buffer zone that shouldn't have been and for whatever reason, trees were cut down here and then, I don't know, four trees were planted here.
Oh.
So, I'm gonna wanna make sure that no more work, no more cutting, nothing is done back there.
Yeah, because these are approved by the conservation commission.
Okay, I, they, they allowed, I mean, after it was done, they moved it.
No, it was, it was required.
It was required, okay.
It was reviewed and approved.
So, that's what they have requested then, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was the mitigation.
It's noted over there, upper right corner of the box, yeah.
So, can we put a, oh, sorry, one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I guess, I don't know, maybe that's on there, I didn't see it. Can we put a note on the landscape plan saying that?
Yeah, it's, it's approved.
Trees is it there?
Approved out of the box.
I'm a little distant here.
Right.
Um, the other one is, I would ask that we stick with the permanent CFO until we check that all these things are actually done, rather than just agreed to.
Stick with...
No, with the temporary.
Yeah.
It's all right.
Bill?
Yes?
Any, any thoughts?
I just, the overall process has been very frustrating and it's clear that they do what they wanna do and at least that's what it seems like. The, the one to me, the fire pit, has been the most egregious violation. Is there gas plumb to the house?
I talked to the phone inspector, it's not...
It's just a gas fire pit?
It's high and connected, I think.
Okay, okay. It's just, all these things have happened, I've consistently been talking about after-hours construction work and these things have happened over and over again. They went in front of the board and said, "We're not doing peers." They put peers in, they said these things. It just, for me, to have to police this, it's been very tiring and it's been two years of, of a hassle here. I just want to find out if there's gonna be somehow, that there's gonna be any sort of a, um, a way to enforce these so I don't have to be the one watching this in here. And this is, it's, it's been a tough process to deal with.
Very frustrating, I'm sure.
Can we do something where when, where there were eight items, there's six items?
I don't believe that any contractor just builds a patio twenty percent larger and adds a fire pit just because they're, they're nice.
But I'm just trying to deal with the fact that it seems, it seems everybody's come to sort of a meeting of the mind about if, when these things are done, if basically you guys can call Imai and Dana and they can go out there and say, "Yes, done, done correctly." So, we can go through the checklist and not have poor Bill come back in two years and say, "I guess what isn't done again." So, I think that would be helpful, it would probably, like, that would be a bad way of making sure.
They're motivated to get it done because they got a sunroom that's half done. You can always walk by there and they'd like to have a permanent, I can say, permanent.
Yes.
I think they're very motivated to get it done.
Okay.
That's about as much as we can do.
But I did, I think, did make sure that those, that you're understanding that this is, yeah, what we see on the plan is, yeah, there's no overreaching or whatever, modification, little tweaks going on, right? But this is, it, that's what's happened in the past, that's what's so frustrating for everybody, actually. There's no more, no more.
Katie, let me ask you a question. Where do you think the situation went wrong? Do you think that you guys didn't have an understanding that this was so tightly regulated or...
We just have to stick with the approval.
Right, yeah, right, right, yeah, right.
Then I can help us.
Yeah, right.
We can, in the progress, we can constantly communication with the planning.
I, I think, Bill, I'm trying to address your concern, you know, maybe we schedule, Imai, just a quick review of the situation in a couple of months. Is that fair?
Yeah.
To see how we're coming with these items.
Yeah, I know that these, just, I wanna just get this done with and figure out, 'cause as it stands right now, more work has to be done and my other concern is that they're working consistently outside of construction hours. So, if they're pulling peers out, they're pulling landscape papers out, doing this one, if I hear another excavator on a Saturday afternoon, I'm gonna call at least again, which they're saying during for me, and then it's come back again to do the, 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 um, the sunroom.
Why don't you restate and, uh, what if, we're gonna talk about how we get documented this? Why don't you restate the construction hours, just to emphasize?
And you do understand, you understand about the construction hours. If the town doesn't allow this past certain hours and on certain days, it's very unfair to your neighbors. And everybody understands this, right? Understand it? I'm not seeing understanding.
Bill, is there anything about the current proposal, those changes that you saw that you object to?
Everything looks good and just, I just wanna make sure that, that fire pit, if it's been gas-plumbed, which it says it's not, that's not concerned, 'cause that was built outside of their knowledge. So, I, that to me is a, is a concern, there's a gas line underneath the backyard that was never approved or...
Inspected.
Inspected or even discussed.
But it's been proven that there is no gas line?
I, I don't know.
Do we know that?
Yeah, John explained it to me.
So, it's just a propane, like, put a, put a tank out there to it?
I don't think there's anything connected to it, as we said.
What's that?
There should be nothing connected to it or anything.
Okay, so it's just a, it's a fire pit, you can put a propane tank out there too?
So, why don't we put that in the document?
Because I was hoping the gas fireplace, it's the, you know, the inspector, that's how you know it's a...
Clarifying that a gas line to the fire pit is allowed. Is that fair? Steve?
That seems fair to me.
Irrigation pipes are put in without knowledge as well, so I don't know what else underground.
Bill just said that the inspector told him there was a gas line, that's where this is coming from.
He said it's a gas fireplace, I don't know if it's just a local gas fireplace with a propane tank?
Propane, that's why...
Or is, I don't, I don't know.
What are you planning to use? Are you planning to use propane or wood?
Wood. If you mean the outside of the patio.
Right.
So, that, only for over.
Wood.
The wood only.
Right, okay, I'll specify that. Why don't you specify that?
So, that means there might be a setup, a burner setup, those are easy to remove.
Right, I just wanna get it.
Right, you just wanna make sure there's gas out there.
Underground irrigation systems are there, they shouldn't have put in underground wiring, I don't know what underground...
Wood only.
No propane, no gas. Wood only.
Or at least if it's propane or gas, as long as it's inspected, that's fine. 'Cause I, I don't know what the policies are for a gas fire pit. I'm guessing they're allowed, but building it without any knowledge when the homeowner's out of town, to me seems suspicious.
So, please understand, are we going to grant them based on the drawings, the permanent? Or are we gonna wait to see it in the field?
Are we gonna... No, we're not, yeah, we're gonna see it in the field.
Good, because when you went through the original, that's not what he said, that's why...
No, I said we were gonna, we were gonna complete the resolution and review it. How, Imai, should we document this? Is this an administrative change, is this a amendment, is this a...
It's, it's an amendment, so the question is, you know, is this something? I think, you know, there were stated a few conditions here, so I think it should come back for a decision.
Okay, so we should write it up as a decision between us, okay?
Yeah.
And we'll vote on that, great. Okay, any, any last thoughts from you? So, Bill, I'm sorry it's been hard for you.
No, it's...
We're trying to do our best to...
No, I understand, there's a lot of stuff going on in town, so...
I know that this hasn't been easy for you guys either.
Yeah.
I appreciate this, at least I appreciate the last round, it was pretty productive. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, we thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right.
The decision will be, it's approved, we'll be starting from like all the way back.
Sorry. Did you say that decision will be...
Oh, that decision will be, I, Katie? Uh, when will that decision be? June nineteenth will be the decision, so we'll write it out. You don't have to come?
Yeah.
But it's gonna document our understanding and allow things to move on. Right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck with that, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks, can you just speak that to them? Okay, next up is sixty-three car path road. I see we have two folks here. Hey! How are you guys?
Go the other side, please.
Okay. This is, this is challenging, but this is a small challenge.
Yeah, there's, there are so...
So, Imai, why don't you take a few minutes and brief us on...
Yeah, what we talked about before. Okay, so, with sixty-three car path here, I am, I'm gonna pull up one visual so we can see what we're talking about here.
Did you leave something, Katie? When we get this, what's that, like, it's like that when we get this done, then we look at the sunroom. Yeah, okay?
Oh, yes.
Can I do that off on there as well?
Yeah.
We're gonna double view this.
Not the sunroom. No, you will go to...
Your data.
Dana.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, Imai, why don't you give us a quick briefing and then we'll turn it over to John.
Okay, so, what we have here is, without me knocking this over, is this is, this is right now sixty-three car path. It encompasses what was once two lots, so sixty-three car path, and I believe this was, um, thirty-one? Oh, no, twenty-five green lane. So, it was, it was two properties, I think the original property line, like, ran through here. They were joined to make one lot and this house was built under site plan approval at sixty-three car path.
What year?
Um... Okay, thank you. Yeah. What they are proposing to do right now is, um, Mr. Dixon's bought this lot here. So, this is, this is thirty-one car path. He owns these three lots now and is going to subdivide this sixty-three car path back into two lots. And the purpose of twenty-five is to give this, um, room to be a conforming lot, basically, to add in this small portion of it here. So, the issue for us becomes, we are looking at, if this had never gone through site plan approval...
Yes, this is a simple A and R thing.
It would, yeah.
We have site plan approval.
It would be a simple A and R, we, we'd look at it, it conforms, you sign off on that.
Exactly.
But we have site plan approval on top of it. And so, we have, basically, we're creating, we have a lot that went under site plan approval, a lot that is now a new lot that, in, in talking with town council, is not gonna be subject to site plan approval.
Right.
And then we have to figure out what is the...
Because the house is on...
Because the house is on this...
To the left.
Yes.
That maintains site plan approval, the other lot has not.
This is the lot that maintains site plan approval.
And it's still in conformance with setback and frontage and everything else.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a conforming lot, yeah. So, they, they drew, this line was drawn so that it's a conforming lot, where this line was drawn.
And...
This is conforming?
Yeah, three twenty.
Okay, and now where does the complication arise?
So, the complication arises now because when the site plan approval was done for sixty-three car path, it considered it as this whole lot. And there are things in the decision that reference, you know, keeping this driveway natural, how this lot acts as buffer to this lot. That all now is basically, those considerations of the site plan approval now go away with this, with this division.
Right.
So, now we're faced with the challenge. Now, originally, this is how I had thought about it, was, okay, we put, you know, this lot will probably have some easements on it that maintain some of the original purposes. And while it's perfectly okay for the owner to put those easements on there, it's not something this board can regulate. This is what I've discussed with town council. Town council has told me that this lot basically becomes its own thing.
Right.
It is now a separate lot.
Right.
Um, you know, even one of their original proposals here, which was this planting strip, um, for buffers, and while, again, they're free to do that between the two lots, this is, we can't site plan appro, we can't review what goes in here.
So, it would make sense to ask for a new buffering on the lot to the left?
On this lot, yeah.
Okay.
And so, that's, that's kind of a new wrinkle that's been thrown in, as we've discussed.
What has been proposed to you is, hey, why don't we put the buffering on the lot to the right?
Yeah.
And our council said, "Can't do that."
Yeah.
That lot is no longer permitted, you don't have control over.
Correct, yeah, that's...
So, you must put any buffering on the lot.
So, yeah, so if we have concerns, if there are concerns, and there probably will be some.
Right.
It has to happen now on this lot.
Has to be a holistic look at that lot.
Yeah, so, so now, we haven't really gotten into design phases of this lot.
Right, right, that's right. Yeah, let's not speculate on what we would or wouldn't need, right?
Yeah, exactly, we have, we, we haven't even gotten that far yet in this process. We've looked at it, you know, um...
Okay, can I stop you there?
Yeah.
Now, Leslie, you, the lawyer, Katie issued an opinion that you just stated, and you disagreed with that, or you...
Well, I'm obviously not a lawyer, but I have two other questions, which I think would, should be asked of council as well, whether I bring it up now or bring it up later. Your call.
Oh, um, bring it up now.
Okay.
Yeah, just to get it out there.
One of them, I talked to Imai about before, and I think it's a phasing issue, which is that you wanna make sure that there is a spot on sixty-three, which will take the new septic.
That, that's the lot to the left?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
That doesn't cut down trees, that does, I don't know if you can test pits or not.
Oh.
In order to make sure that the new septic, we don't have a house without septic. That would be...
We have to take a holistic look at sixty-three.
Correct.
Yes.
But I mean, before we approve this, we have to make sure that there is a spot, um, that works for the septic. Otherwise, otherwise, the dedication of the old septic to twenty-one...
Okay, that's not a legal question, but then I'd be right.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's actually, we can't, I would not think we can cut it unless there's a septic that goes with the house. And right now, if they cut it, there is no septic that goes with sixty-three car path road.
Just don't answer it yet. Let me just...
I will speak when spoken.
Good, let me just, let me finish that one.
I appreciate your patience.
Thank you. So, that's, that's one concern I have.
So, you have a question, the question about septic?
Yeah, the other concern I have is the, um, moving of the original property line between the two green lane parcels. Because what's happening is you're, yeah, you're moving the property line from corner lot to give space to the, uh, it's twenty-one or twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Thank you, twenty-five, forget the sufficient front end, makes all the sense in the world, except that you're taking the existing driveway from the existing house and putting it on the adjacent property, which we've seen in other instances which we've seen in other instances, how they get into a lot of very blurry issues. And then you also get into things like who plowed it, who repaired it, some system faults, whose issue is it?
But right now, our jurisdiction is just going to be the property on the left, having nothing to do with the property on the right.
Right, but are they not cutting it up with our, I won't say approval, but standing side?
Well, see, that's not a shared guideline.
Yeah, just hold on for a second. I, I really think that Katie host told Imai, your, Imai?
Yes.
Katie has told you that your business is the property on the left.
Yes.
Do we have anything to say about the property on the right?
No.
Okay.
So I guess my question is, right now, it's still one big property.
Right, but that's not worth discussing the change, right?
Do we have anything to say about where the line is drawn? Like in other words, you know, if, just as an example, if this line were moved to here, then the buffer would remain on the property.
Right, well, we can maybe talk them into it, is the question, right?
So, so they can make this subdivision with the easement?
I mean, A and R approval not required means that we don't have much to say, right?
Yeah, they just, you, you meet the conformity.
Yeah, right.
But that, I guess that's my question, is, do they meet the conformity?
Yeah, dimensionally. The conformity is dimension wise.
Yeah.
The conformity isn't, isn't where your driveway is. Conformity is dimensional.
Yeah, exactly. There's not that layer of thought we have to, it's just geometry.
If they were to paint themselves into a corner.
Hold on.
I mean, I'm, I'm being told that's, that's a law, so, so let it be written, so let it be done.
Right.
Okay, there's a logic here which, which, you know, gets authority, and I'm backing off and saying, that's a law, that's a law.
Right, your question is about approval not required issues, which can be answered, I think, by council. We'll be in a good conversation with you and council. But our business is to adjust that property on the left.
That's what the way it is.
Gotcha. Right, Imai?
Yes, that's, that's what I've discussed with council.
But I like Steve's idea to ask him to say, hey, is it still geometrically possible to move that to the right and win over that buffer? Okay. All right, so now Jonathan, turn to you.
Well, I'll address, I'll address that one first. If you folks insist on a buffer there, that's what we would do.
Oh, would be easiest thing for you to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing we would do is there would be, I think I can't even show here, there would be a slight gore to get our quadrangle.
So you know that A and R rules better than you know.
Yeah, to, to, to get our quadrangle, David. You know, which means it has to come up from here, here, and here. I think to accomplish that, Jay said there'd be a little gore here, but. Michael, Michael.
What's a gore? What do you mean like a, what do you mean like a tailor gore?
A pyramid.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but the thought, thought, one thing I want to throw at the board and get their thoughts on it is this, for those of you who walked it, you know, this, this property is screened from all other properties. Most people don't even know it exists, but in fact, when one green lane went, and I've got a couple of pictures, over here, it's, it's less than a two, two acre lot. He further augmented all his plantings here because he didn't want to see it.
Why aren't we talking about that?
Uh, I'm just, I'm talking about isolation. No one can see it.
Right.
So my point is, the only people affected by this are this house and this house, and I'm looking at, at, at site plan guidelines, if either one of them can plant a buffer if they want it, but why not let the two property owners, if it gets split? The hope is it gets sold as one. One of the purposes here, he's been trying to sell this for four years and it hasn't been sold, so he's trying to establish value, he still hopes it all stays together. But the thought is-
You're asking us to treat it as one property, but it's going to be two.
No, but, but your guideline, I think the closest to your guideline on site plan is, is to screen obnoxious views. And no one from, from outside can see either of these properties, and he's augmented this too, once one old, one forty went in there. So do we, do we have to set it, you know, if we have to screen it, we'll move the property line over twenty feet.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
But the question is, do we really have to screen it? Why not let the-
I'm not so sympathetic to someone who says, hey, the buffering's there if it's on the other property, right? Like, let me chop down my trees because there's so much wood here and the wood's on the other property, it's like, that just doesn't stay there.
Oh, I've seen that.
Yeah.
They run their grass right up to the property line.
Right, exactly. The third thing to do is everybody's responsible for half of the buffering that's just there.
Yeah, and, and both properties may decide, may decide they don't want a buffer between them. That's all I'm throwing out for consideration by the board, or it's all-
It would be a solid precedent to set for me.
Sorry, I've got a cold tonight, but anyway, I wanted to throw that out to the board because everything else is-
How much of a hardship would it be to move the property line in and do the-
No, it's not, it's not a big hardship, it's just such a lovely spot. I think if I was in either one of those houses, I wouldn't put a solid buffer. I'd probably put a few trees to break it up.
Oh, well, we aren't trying, I'm not suggesting we would make decisions tonight about how much of a buffer.
Yeah.
I think there's enough information for it, right?
No, there's no-
Kim's never seen this.
No.
I mean, I've seen this.
I mean, we have to have a separate hearing and-
Yeah, Jay, Jay was gonna, Jay, I apologize, Jay, when it looked like we might not be here, he's, he had to run over framing here.
That's okay.
But yeah, but my thought is if we do have to have a buffer, maybe have a brief discussion, rather than a solid, give them the option of making a solid buffer, but if you're going to put a minimum, put trees to break up to view so you can see through it, like good scapes, if something looks nice, you don't want to totally screen it, but just look through, but anyway, I throw that out.
Well, I'm not comfortable with bear and relying on the adjacent property to provide buffering. But how much buffering there is, as I've looked at other people.
Okay.
Yeah?
On site, between these two lots?
Yes, exactly.
There's not, there's not, I mean, it's, it's all the periphery and it's-
Yeah, that's what we're saying, we need something added.
Wonderful, you know, long, well, there's a ridge of the stuff.
Oh, yeah. So are you suggesting you would be fine with no buffering between the two parcels?
No, I'm trying to look at this in terms of a special permit of this one property within the defined line.
I wanted to get your feeling.
How many times has this happened? Do we have any idea how many times this happens?
This is the first I've ever seen something like this.
I've never, I've never seen it.
You bring a lot of firsts to us.
Remember, this is a six acre lot, is what we're dealing with it. What we tried to show here is, this was one of the early RGFA. Since then, the whole neighborhood was two acre lot, the little houses on two and one and a half acre lot, so it's still-
My sense is we're not dealing with enough information to make a decision about buffering.
No, you're not. You don't, you don't, you don't have a buffer.
Yeah, right.
And if we can discuss it tonight, since we'll give you a proposal, is the board receptive to, like I talked about, some real specimen trees to break it up, rather than this solid, and then if the owners want to make it solid, they can.
Yeah, I'd, I'd turn to Kim.
I want to look at a-
Yeah, right, yeah, it's hard to say on the spot.
And really, there's very little space where the, it would be, the house is largely open and gorgeous, and it would be facing-
Whatever, on the other side.
A wall of, a very close wall, very claustrophobic, a close wall of trees would be a disaster.
I mean-
Right.
That's why, it would be good to see a plant.
Yeah.
That's why you won, right?
Yes, oh, just identify yourself, sorry.
Harry, I'm Harry Dixon, my family owns the, yeah.
Oh, hi, Harry.
And he's not as long as, as our board member, but along, even, so even before this house, longtime neighbor, neighborhood.
I've lived in this neighborhood for twenty-six years. I used to live on Meadowbrook Road, and my room's over here. I love the town of Weston, I think you guys do a remarkable job, and don't have credit, exhausting the amount of work you guys do. The neighborhood changed so dramatically since I built my home. I built this house on a four acre lot with the adjacent lot being two acres, for a total of six. Since I've done that, one green lane was built. One green lane is ten thousand square feet, which is right there.
Right there.
And I, at my own expense, planted screening along, and both of you guys have kind of had to come to the site lot and you saw the screened driveway on that side.
It's gorgeous.
So I, at my own expense, when that person built that home, which is fine what they did, I screened it all, and then one forty Meadowbrook, which is, Jonathan, can you point to that?
There.
It's another ten thousand square foot house on a two acre lot. That I put more screening behind the tennis court there. So you can't see my house, you can't see from any street.
Yeah, so we don't know what you're saying. We would like to have a separate meeting to understand better.
Okay.
The sidewalk we've had.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a very imposing, strong architectural statement that has right now gorgeous lawn that goes down to the tennis court and beyond.
Yeah.
And that's where that line is drawn, so whatever house, ignoring, ignoring, you know, division, if, if this was just came to us somewhere else in town, any house you put next to that would be hard pressed to stand up to that house. So how that works in there, it, you know, and I think you'll have, I think the second lot will have more chance if it has some screening, whether it needs an entire, you know, regiment of soldiers, I'd probably agree with you on that. But where the, where the middle ground is, I don't know.
I'm listening intently.
And I'm thinking and talking, which is always dangerous.
So what, what, let me just stop, what do you want to do now?
I think-
What do you want to discuss?
Well, I was just going to show the rest of the proposal, because we are proposing an easement to maintain-
Are there other decisions that the pine court has to make about this?
Can we give more, hold on a second, John.
So besides, besides the site plan approval and A and R, do you mean, or?
Yeah, we were concerned about buffering, and Kim's going to take a look at it, we're going to look at that later. What else about this do we need to consider?
I mean, I believe Leslie's right with the septic system needs to be shown on this.
He showed it, he showed it there. What happened is, is they did a number of test holes a number of years ago, and this is all open. I, I think, does that show the tree line right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and he's done a number of test holes, that's where he shows the, is that the sample?
That's a recharge basin.
Yeah, he's, he's, one of these plans, he showed a septic, sample septic, there it is.
So he talked a ton of septic, he goes-
But that's based on other test holes.
So that's moving the septic on the right.
Dave, have you seen this?
No.
Okay.
David doesn't see it.
Jonathan, what, I, I really want to have a really holistic meeting on this.
Yeah.
We're kind of having half a meeting here.
Yeah, this is the-
So I want to have a whole meeting just on this.
This is just to give the basics tonight, and I thank you for bearing with us, but yeah, we addressed the septic. He's also shown, Imai wanted to know where the generator is. We're still looking for the information on it, but that's where it is, right there. So it's right, you know, it's not close to anything, but we'll, we haven't gotten the decimals yet, we'll have that for you. Both irrigation wells are on this, on this property, so it would be something that said, back when this was done, you didn't have to do your own well, but they already have their own wells. We'll go over the lighting with Imai, because he'd have to go down by two thousand.
Roughly, so this, this one was approved in lots at slightly higher than what it is, so something's going to have to come down.
So what's the next step for that review? Are you having an in-depth meeting, or what's the deal? How is Kim and Dave going to have a look at it and then we'll go back to what's in there?
So, no, they'll, they'll get us new drawings, and then they'll take a look at it. I think, you know, Kim's already been on a sidewalk, I don't think we need to have a sit-down discussion for it.
Great, and then what's scheduled, the full meeting for when?
I think we can do this by the nineteenth. Can you guys get us something by the nineteenth? Uh, you could get us something by next week, by the twelfth?
Yeah.
And then-
I have a question for you. On our sidewalk, people expressed, and we're willing to do this, expressed a real concern, I guess up there, there's a nice vegetated buffer right there.
It's not our business, why are we talking about it?
Well, this is leverage. We're willing to give you that easement if it makes you feel more comfortable doing this.
Yeah, you, you're welcome to do that.
Let them offer.
Yeah.
Let them offer.
It, it, it's voluntary, the board can't consider.
The property line moved to the easement and plantings, does something that they-
No, I, I'm half informed, that's why I'm a teen of it, but I will never get more frustrated than this, I promise. I'm frustrated. I want just the whole, we, we're having a half a meeting here, and I don't have all the information, or we don't have all the information. So I'd like to have all the information, I'd like to have Kim's opinion, informed opinion, I'd like to have Dave's informed opinion, rather than kind of pecking at it like we're trying to do here.
What I'll also do is, Imai, I'll send you a memo of what we're getting from the next one.
Awesome.
Make sure I'm not missing something.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
For the septic system, things have changed, you know, they, they have all kinds of-
Water health requirements probably changed, yes, but that's what Dave will be reviewing for the new one.
So, right, so I'd like to have their septic approval down there in a few years.
And then other sweepeners, whatever you're talking about there, obviously, that's-
China B, we like, yes.
But I, I really do want you to understand one thing, that since I've done my project, there are eleven, ten thousand square foot homes built in my neighborhood on lots between one acre and two acres. One eighty-six Meadowbrook, eleven thousand square feet on less than an acre of land. It's a hundred feet from me, so there's a ton of them, so I'm, I'm losing so much money trying to sell my home as one big lot, because everyone's building large homes on small lots now, which is fine.
Right, right.
I just need to be flexible and nimble to try to lose less money than I already am.
Right.
What's the size of your house?
It's a ten thousand nine or so.
Yeah, so I'm on forty, because where the average home now is, one to two.
So what will the size of the smaller lot be?
Two acres.
Be right about two acres.
Okay, Tony.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks for coming to the sidewalk, I appreciate it.
It's fun.
Thank you.
I have fun walking up your driveway.
I screened everything.
Sorry, I don't want to bump your-
Yeah, house, that driveway to down with your wetlands was originally on the adjacent property, and was fight between those-
Okay.
Thanks, Dave, thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kim, appreciate it, thanks, Dave.
I understand, but same point I was about to-
Imai, you want to distribute it, or no, we don't have to?
So, um, we have, we have them here, and you know what? We distributed them?
Move to decision.
Okay.
Let's move to decision.
So, let me just update you guys on eighty Highland then.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, night night.
Of the decision.
Decision, yeah. So eighty Highland, in going through the dimensions of the decision, I discovered that from their original survey, they are point two feet over the Highland.
That's what that was all about, I figured out what you were getting at.
The best site plan?
Yeah.
So I've, I've made, I've made the cer, I've made their civil engineer aware of this. You know, I, I did ask him, is it because you've changed like datum points, you know, they use different orthogonal or whatever, datum points to, to do their? So he's, he was going to try and get the original survey when they built it to verify height. He hasn't got to me that. So as of this point, my suggested course of action would be, we're not, let's not look at the decision until we rectify, if, if somebody, uh, decides somehow.
Good decision.
We agree with you.
Good decision.
So, I mean, the existing house, which they're only building the cabana, right?
Yeah.
Well, the existing house is too high. Sort of a fait accompli, isn't it?
Well, I, I-
I mean, we're not going to have somebody go up there and start song.
I, I want to, I want to cross that-
Actually, we had that happen.
Yeah, that's, that has happened.
Yeah.
You know, if, if it comes to that, I'll talk about that with John.
Okay.
About what, what do you do, what do you do?
He's just confirming the maintenance.
Yeah, but fir, but first, I want to confirm that that's actually the truth. I mean, they're both based on surveys, so the prima facie evidence I'm done is it's too high. But there may be nuances to that, that, you know, that are worth taking a look at. But, yeah, it may come to that. The other ones of these are Dana's, so I'll, on Kim's.
So, all, all eighty Highland is on, is on hold.
Eighty Highland is on hold, yeah, until we get, until further notice.
So Steve, when we review these, do you want to go over changes, or do you want to just submit them silently?
We get some more land here, by the way?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is it a capel, a capel?
You're probably better at this than me.
I thought that we were all going to review them in advance of the meeting.
Yes, I think we have.
And then come, come to the meeting.
Yes, okay.
And then do what we do at the meeting, which is to-
Verbalize it?
Verbalize what changes we have, if they're simply minor typo.
Right, exactly.
Okay, they don't need to be verbalized, if you just hand them to Imai or Dana.
Okay, gotcha. So everybody will make their own judgments, what they want to verbalize?
Right.
Okay, got it. So I have nothing to verbalize?
Which one are we doing?
I'll start with the, yeah.
In order.
Be ahead?
Yep.
Well, you don't have the one that gave you the handwriting on, whatever, on fifty-three car path, or?
No, but I've incorporated those changes into a document, it's here, yeah.
Which one are we talking about now?
He's going in order, he's starting with ten alphabet, right? For the be ahead of the game. Be ahead of the game, right.
Okay, nothing, nothing for me.
Well, the only obvious is Alicia's not here.
Oh, so be four, not zero.
Nothing for me.
Okay, so we want to improve these one by one, go ahead.
I move that we approve the certificate of action for be ahead of the game recreational soccer day camp at the Woodland Elementary School.
Any second?
Second, you said it.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed? Move on?
All right, we have global premier soccer also at, actually, one second. Ten alphabet lane, okay, all right.
Another ten alphabet.
Yeah, I thought you said eleven before, that's why I was confused.
This one says Palmer's. Alicia's not going to be happy with that.
Oh, jeez. Why can't we remove that anyway?
No.
That's even more than Alicia, Alicia, that's a whole last name.
Primer.
Oh, jeez.
So, I don't have any changes, anyone?
Nope, nope, all good.
Okay, make a motion.
I move that we approve the certificate of action site plan approval and special permit for global premier soccer.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed? Move on?
All right, then we got Meadowbrook Day Camp. I don't have any changes.
No, no changes, so, except for a little Palmer.
Except the obvious.
Yeah, but I don't want to copy.
Right. Motion?
Make the motion, then we approve certificate of action site plan approval and special permit for Meadowbrook Day Camp, Meadowbrook Day Camp.
Anybody move a second?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed? Move on?
Do I have eleven Bradford?
I guess, uh-
Leslie, you want to go?
Yeah.
Leslie, I actually got your position, I can, I can help him out.
Okay.
Steve wants to hear it.
Okay, why can't we create it out?
The second sentence in the first paragraph, the sidewalk was conducted, though provided reading in the rear, that I want to actually move behind the second paragraph, because it talks about what's coming out before we discuss what's actually in there. With me?
Yes.
Then it, oh, yes, okay, so that's what I want to do?
Yes, I'm right here, Stace.
Okay.
Do you make any additional changes?
Um, the other thing is-
This is all her edits that she's going through right now.
Oh, okay.
I gave them to you ahead of time. I gave them to you ahead of time. The other thing is I want to add the fact that it's a birch tree, I don't know where that went to. Oh, Bradford, Bradford, did you not do the birch? Okay, where it says a large deciduous tree?
Yeah, I shouldn't highlight that, as I can tell, it's.
Okay, a large deciduous tree, I believe that's the birch.
Yeah, I have birch now.
Okay. Bocce, we all know how to spell now, with the E, B O C C E. It's hot tub, not hot tubbin'.
Hot tubbin'.
Very exact. Then this says retaining wall, it should probably say between the woodland and edge, and edge of lawn to level the lawn, just a little more indicative of what's going on. Porch on the retaining wall near the front entrance, where did it say that? To reconfigure the new garage, there's so many garages, this is the new garage they asked for approval a while ago. With masonry steps and hooded stair tread lights will be added to the newly configured stair risers, so they're adding more lights. And the total wouldn't count to be within the total allowable for the property.
You said stair risers?
Stair risers, yeah, they're going in there. And I think, I think, I think, that is it.
So. Leslie, already covered some of mine, but on the last paragraph on the first page in her version, it says, and voted five zero with one member absent.
So it'll be four zero.
Yeah, well, before it was, I was questioning, yeah.
How did you know it was a member absent?
I was just lucky.
I think I just kind of walked out there.
I was thinking.
He was covering his bases either way.
Clearly.
Right, whoo, that's pretty impressive.
Steve, you're all done?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any motion there?
Yes, I move that we approve the COA site plan approval amendment as corrected to eleven Bradford Road.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed? Move on?
You got your stuff?
Yeah, I got it, it's already outside, so.
Okay, okay, cool.
All right, good night, everyone.
Night night.
Have a bar. If you finally leave.
One day we're going to leave before you.
Yeah.
Did you pass it out?
I'm under Brown, I'm going to pass it out. Whitman Tennis Center.
Oh, that one.
Summer membership.
Nope, all yours.
Did anybody have a change?
Couple of very minor.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
So they're not even worth mentioning, I'll just give them.
Yeah, just give it.
Just a format.
Okay, I just had format too. Okay, okay, great, we're good.
So I move that we approve the site, the certificate of action for the Whitman Tennis Center for summer membership.
Second.
Oh.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Next, move on?
Okay, next is, let's see.
Twenty-three Laurel.
Yeah, twenty-three Laurel.
We're going to slow down here.
You want me to go, or?
Make sure, Steve, do you need a copy?
No, but I have a couple commas, but go ahead, Leslie.
You have to, Steve, wait for first.
Okay. All right, so. Both item threes.
These have, Leslie's changed a lot.
Oh, good.
Oh. Okay, well, okay, so Leslie corrected my, on item three, she added pines after two, because I was like two one.
Right.
So corrected that, and the rest of mine are just little tiny commas, so I'm all set.
You moved two.
Leslie?
She got it.
Number, okay, this stuff, I guess, wasn't, I don't know, remove the larger maple at the front of the house. And I think we should say, and our arborist, who I guess is Weston Landscaping, Phil Jones approved this. So we should put his name in there, and I'd like to say it's confirmed in severe decline due to whatever.
She's got this written down for you, you mind? Okay.
So this is a major tree, which you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Also, also, if they said the existing stump will be dug and removed, so the new tree can be replanted in the same spot. Okay. Down at the very bottom, it talks about the, it talks about the last paragraph. And it says, however, the existing runoff problems could be addressed by subtle rating changes. I don't, not sure if that's on the applicant or the abutment property, which property the subtle rating changes is.
It's the applicant, so, yeah.
Okay, we should do that. And then somewhere here, I saw it, and I don't know where it is now, something about a, Dave said there was a moderate, this one or the next one? A moderate change. Move all the trees, would be a moderate change to the adjacent property?
Yeah, I phrase that now as would not exacerbate the runoff issue.
Okay, good. That's it, be addressed by subtle, exactly, okay.
Okay.
Because that's, anything is annoying if you have it to begin with.
That's good wording.
And then on number one, the bowl part, the second page of the bowl part.
Yeah.
Says, if you tell them both sustainable, we should say tree and sustainable understory planting.
Okay.
Detailing, sorry, detailing the tree and?
Yes, yeah, and trees, not just the understory planting we have to take a look at. Because they're adding some trees.
Okay.
And trees after planting.
Yeah.
Okay, someone want to?
I move that we approve the site plan approval amendment, site plan review amendment, amendment, have you ever seen amendment done many times?
No. The way I phrase it now, I took, I took that out, that's like a.
Twenty-three Laurel road, tree removal and replanting.
Form building thing does that.
With changes, as, as so noted.
Did two.
I'm just making sure, you got rid of the plethora, right?
Yes, I got rid of, it's plethora, yeah. So correcting my plans.
Excellent, thank you, good point.
Did you have other?
No.
Did you want a second or not?
Yes, I do, a second.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's move on. Five Chadwick?
Five Chadwick.
I just have very minor typos, so I'll just give them to.
Okay, anybody need to see five Chadwick?
Mike, do you have Mike Thomas on there?
Uh, this one, no, I didn't get Thomas to bring out five Chadwick.
Okay. If you go to where it starts with edit site visit on four thirty.
Yes.
It says, should be adjusted, we should take out to save additional landscape on the up slope, and it said it should read, just stay completely out of, do not disturb buffer slash setback.
Okay, yeah.
All right. And then it should say the trees were agreed with, or the board arborists agreed that the, that the, the, the trees are declining. I don't want it to say the trees were confirmed, I wanted to say that basically Kim agreed.
Okay.
That the trees were in decline.
Okay.
And then it talks, next paragraph, about the amount of patent lights at the front, let's say, I want to say lining the front driveway was a concern.
Okay, lining.
Yep, and then at the bottom it says the number of lights to four, can you add, and not place any at the entry of the driveway, because they're sitting at the top of the wall, which means they're actually going to be at high heights here in a car. You move one back from the entry, I'm not going to tell them how far it is, they get to figure it out.
Okay.
So it doesn't affect anybody on the street.
Okay.
That's it? Yeah.
I move that we approve the certificate of action with the changes noted for five Chadwick Road. Actually, this is an amendment to the certificate of action for five Chadwick Road. Period.
Leslie, change a second?
Yeah.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. Nice.
How about that, it's a record.
And fifty-six cart path. Uh, this one has Leslie's edits on it. Particular edit, oh, we'll get to it on your edits if you go through it.
So where's one of their edits?
Um, I just put them.
Oh, okay. Do you want to go through your edits, because we can't tell what they are?
Yeah, because some of them are.
They're online on there.
Actually, they're not any here, all.
One, one I wanted to talk about, and.
Okay, is that the fact that they were in the buffer zone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the reason, the reason I had an issue with saying that is because in reviewing this, when they first came in talking with Emily, they actually have an administrative procedure for allowing tree removal even within that twenty-five feet. And theirs is more permissive than we were going to allow. So, I hesitate to say that, you know, it's because they were in that buffer when the, the body that is tasked with governing that would have allowed more than we did.
But we do that a lot of the time, don't we?
Uh.
No?
I don't think so, no, I mean, I, I think we have concern about going into the wetlands, but particularly, you know, we don't. When there, when there are things within the, within the wetland buffer, like, just looking at forty-four oak, when they did that replanting within the wetland buffer.
Yeah.
That river's edge, they planted smaller than our typical conditions of ten to twelve, and that was because they do hand, they have to do it by hand.
Yeah.
So in that case, you know, we, we went with their, with their recommendation, with, with their standard. So in this case, I, you know, I don't, I don't want to rely on, on the twenty-five foot buffer, because in that case, it would have actually been probably more permissive than we would be.
But, who? But they're coming to the planning board for approval, do they have to go to the concom for approval?
They have to get concom approval for that one tree, yeah. But like I said, well, actually, no, I should rephrase that, sorry. Because conservation has an administrative procedure for, I think, I can't remember the number of trees, it's definitely more than one. It might be like as much as five, but they, they do have, or they don't have to go before the board. They're, they're, before the conservation commission.
Because it's a, whatever it is, it's a site plan approval parcel.
Yes.
We have the, we have the oversight about what can get cut, what can't get cut.
Yes.
Okay, so partially it's because it's well forested, but partially, I think, it's because we have concern. Our concern is planning board, and granted, we're not the concom, we can still have concern about what's in the, in the buffer zone.
Yes.
Yeah, I might, maybe I'll.
I understand your, I understand your hesitancy.
Yeah, maybe I'd phrase it down this, I mean, if you go back to our standards and criteria.
Yeah.
You know, it's, I'm trying to remember, it's like, you know, protect sensitive environmental features or something like that. I think if we phrase it around that, that might be a little better.
That would definitely work, yeah. Thank you.
Good discussion.
Is that it?
Uh, sorry, I've got a piece of paper here somewhere. I guess that was it, yeah. Yeah, I know, I said, my copy's gone, yeah. So that must be it, yeah.
In the first sentence, you say to modify the COA for RGFA site plan review, I, I think you want to cross out amendment.
I do, yeah.
This is the amendment.
Yeah.
And then I assume that the original COA was seven twenty-one eighteen, or something other than nineteen?
Oh, yeah.
Not there yet?
Yeah.
Was it eighteen or?
No, it was, it was exact further back than that, I think, um, I think, yeah, I think I'm in, oh, nine, I might have meant to type her. But I'll, I'll confirm the correct date.
And then.
Yeah.
At the bullet, same thing, it says twelve twenty nineteen.
Oh, yeah.
We're not there yet.
No, yeah.
So was that twelve twenty eighteen?
That was in eighteen, yeah.
Um, I guess that's it. I move that we approve the certificate of action amendment for fifty-six cart path road with the changes noted.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed? Righty. How about that?
Nice.
World record.
That's great.
Approving minutes?
Do we have any minutes? Leslie, you did minutes, right?
Yeah, I gave them to you last time, I thought, or I sent them to you.
I thought you had questions for me before we did them, and I.
Well, as I've reviewed them, so I can, I'll dig them up and send them back to you then.
But if you've reviewed them and you're confident, you can make a motion to it.
I made a motion and we approve the meeting minutes with any comments I made, but I'll have to find out what they are.
We'll tell, we usually do it.
For which day?
Which dates I knew.
One nine nineteen.
One nine nineteen?
We'll have to get back to you on that.
Second.
I did review those.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed?
So I have, I have a question about meeting minutes.
Oh.
Two questions, actually. Number one, why are we so far behind?
Are we still?
I will take that blame for that.
Well, that was January ninth.
Oh, yeah, good question.
This is June.
Well, Imai, why don't you explain the process you go through?
So the process I go through is, well, Alicia used to do the minutes, well, we have a new minister, new minister coming on board.
Where's my second question?
So, yeah, we do have a new one coming on board, so, her, her name is Kelly, so everybody say hi to Kelly, because she.
Hi, Kelly. You're doing a great job, Kelly.
And the, the other reason is then, you know, as I, as I get them in, you know, they're, I do have to do some checking on them. One, I have to put in all the documents that we reviewed, that's, that's actually a state requirement. I, now Dana does that for me, so I, I don't have to do that anymore. But I still do have to go through them, particularly with these, with the ones that were before Dana came on board. You know, context matters, right, on, on what these things are, he watches the video, makes corrections. But still, I have to, you know, if you're, if you weren't familiar with the project, you're, you're not going to catch some of the nuances, so I still have to go through them. And honestly, I just have not been going through them at the speed.
You've been busy maybe?
Somewhat.
There is anything, there's no one can substitute for you, you're saying, because you have the context?
Yeah, I think as it goes on.
Okay.
I think, yeah, then, then it'll be, you know.
So Dana can do more by himself?
Yeah, I think so, I think as it goes on, Dana will be able to.
Are we planning on Dana attending, like, all planning board meetings, is that?
So, well, he's going to be here just like he was tonight.
Okay, but like, I guess we were done with all the hearings and meetings, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So he'll, he'll sit through all the meetings and hearings?
Yeah, yeah.
So he'll know the context?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I don't foresee the times, like, when he first started, there were times when he had nothing on the agenda, I, that's probably not going to come up again, but.
Yeah, but all I'm saying is that he should be able to review minutes for your hearings as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think now he will be.
And then he's going around the corners.
Yeah, we, I think, you know, now we've.
So given that Steve brought it up, why don't we take a look at it, like, three months and see if we're catching up?
Catching up, okay.
Yeah.
Question, these, go ahead.
Go ahead.
These are, these are called meeting minutes, which are much, much more exacting than meeting notes or meeting summary. Is it required by law that these be minutes rather than summary or notes, and that would lessen your need to get it spot on? I mean, anybody could watch.
So I think, I think it is required to be minutes, yes.
But they don't really require a huge amount, if you go to the AG site, the website.
I'm just wondering, if the fact that we do have it on video, would lessen a little bit of your.
You know.
I don't want, I don't want to screw it up.
We did, we did, our other planners have complained about that before, that now we have videos. Minutes should just say, please refer to video, but that's not, that is so far ahead.
But we don't do anything, we're near that, so what I'm saying that, there should be a little bit more elbow room, there may be more elbow room, whether that's a question from the council.
Actually, are you sure you need to do what you're doing?
So, okay, I need, I know we need to do minutes, and I know we need, you know.
Steve, you can get away with discussing notes.
Because I remember, the last time I looked at it, it was pretty broad, the guidelines.
I mean, because that. What you're doing is great, but if you get a little elbow room, that would be good, if you're spending some time.
Let's talk about minutes in three months and see what's going on.
Okay, but I want to ask someone now. Which is, I mean, this doesn't help Imai or Dana, but what I was thinking, and of course now Alicia's not doing the minutes anymore, and Kelly is, and I'm sure, you know, Kelly will get up to speed, but. When I was reviewing minutes, you know, over the past year that Alicia did, there were very few changes that I made.
Oh, very seldom, yeah.
For the most part, nothing substantial. And, and it just makes me wonder, again, this isn't helping them, but do we even need to get involved in reviewing them? Uh, if, if Imai and Dana are reviewing them, or Dana.
But we do, we are, I mean, we always vote on.
Yeah, they have to be approved.
We have to be approved by us, but you're right. But maybe we don't need to really get down into it, maybe you could say to us, these are the minutes, they're done?
Well, I think.
No, we approve, I trust Imai has reviewed them.
Just like we're trusting each other.
Let's back up for a little, Steve took the brunt of this for a long time, I never understood why, but I wasn't going to be questioning my good luck, that I didn't have to do it.
More verbally skilled.
Right, but, but now I think it makes sense for us to trade off, and it really isn't that onerous, because they are just pretty much a quick read. But there are times when there are nuances that I think are important, or need more people to take a look at. And although Imai knows this, Dana's still getting to know us.
So I think.
And Kelly's going to be young to this too.
Yeah, so we're doing every fifth set of meeting minutes.
Yeah, right.
It's not a big deal.
Yeah, right.
We just need to get them done faster.
Right.
Yeah, well, so also, the way I had kind of broken it up when it was, um, in the previous board, like, um, Al and Tony were working on our big forty B project, so-
Right, and that's why I was doing the-
Yeah, so and then, kind of Sue was my pitch hitter for site visits, you know, and then, and then I had Steve on minutes, and then I started having you come on site visits and minutes too, Leslie, and so that's, that was kind of how I, you know, made my work assignments with, with folks, just to, you know, kind of spread it out as fairly as I could.
You're the foreman of the board.
Kind of, yeah.
You're the foreman, exactly.
Yeah, you know, yeah, or like team manager, determine batting lineup, I'm not the star player, but I can tell you who's hitting here.
Just to address Steve's question, do we need to review them? How are people feeling? Leslie, you're saying yes?
I think yes.
Okay.
So I think that's fine, but if we spread it out over the five of us.
Yeah, right.
Much easier.
You know, especially if we're doing it faster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed.
That's not going to speed it up, is it?
But it's going to take the onerous off one person.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Because it calls for date, time, place of meeting, members present or absent, decisions made, or actions taken, including the votes, a summary of the discussion.
Right, not in there.
Yeah, a list of all the documents, and a name of any member who participated in the meeting remotely.
Yeah.
I mean, I've written meeting notes for several years.
Yeah, we could summarize more.
Yeah.
I mean, we are pretty detailed.
They're pretty summary.
Yeah.
I mean, you hit the highlights, you hit the bullet points.
Well, that's what we, yeah, that's what we try and hit, things that, like, discussions that came up, especially like if they led to, you know, a change or something like that, or-
Ready to move on?
And most of it just says, no action taken, if you read our notes, it's always an action taken, which I always, which I always think is interesting.
That's- Yeah, I-
It's like, we don't really do anything.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
Those, those are, those are particular areas I pay attention to when I look at them.
Yeah, see, it was like, blah, 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 none, none, none.
Yeah, see, I would just give all the mentions.
Yeah, 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 it's very interesting.
Well, what she means by action, none is if there's no follow-up required.
A lot of times there are follow-ups, that's what I've found, is that, you know, like, like, here's more, but anyway, um, so I did the January twenty-third.
Okay.
Yeah, I read that.
Okay.
I read that. The only thing was a misspelling of Steve's name.
Okay.
It's true, it happened.
Did you want to approve that now?
And I would like to, yes. Yeah, well, that's, I mean, you said that, I, that's the only reason there were Google Docs, it's because you said, read that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, yes, yeah, so, um-
We want to talk about the Google Doc stuff, if you can.
Yeah, all right, yeah, so they're read, that was it, it was Steve Oppenheimer.
Excellent.
Okay.
Did you want to approve it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, um, I move that we approve the meeting minutes from January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, with the modifications noted.
Right, what?
My second.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed? Great. Imai, have something to talk about?
Yeah, so town planner report, I just want to go over what is upcoming, so-
So it's a schedule night?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, um, next meet, next, um, next week coming up, uh, we, we're still not transitioned off of the eight AM site visits yet, so we'll have eighteen skating pond at eight AM.
Right, I already had mine, because I'm quite young.
Yeah, 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 yours, um, so, as we're trying to schedule the rotation, um, anybody troublesome making that to?
I won't be here, I mean, I'm out of town.
You won't be? Okay.
I am hoping, I will, I'm heading, I've carpet installed.
Sure.
And of course, they always tell you, you know, the day before at five o'clock, when it's going to be, and so I have no idea about the time on that.
Okay.
But hopefully I will know in advance.
Okay.
So, I'm a possible skating pond.
Okay.
I mean, I already was out there once.
Somebody should-
Yeah.
When they were blasting, I'm there by myself.
Imai, I'll go. Okay.
I'll go for sure.
Okay, so, okay, great. All right, um, we have our special meetings on the twelfth, that's when we're going to hear on seven fifty-one Boston Post Road, the big, um, and our, I'm sorry, the forty B project, what's that?
What time is that one?
That is going to be in the auditorium, yes.
What time is that?
Seven or seven thirty, or she says?
That's going to be, that's going to be seven thirty.
And then the thirteenth.
Can't make it earlier.
I don't think that's going to be that crowded, really, we'll see.
I thought, Leslie, are you making that video? I thought you could-
I am gone, but I am coming up for one of those nights, and I assume the twelfth, the first one is the one I should be there for.
The first, yeah, to be there on the twelfth.
The second one, you've already heard my comments, and hopefully they'll get incorporated.
Yeah, so on the thirteenth, we'll review our comments.
If there's any way you can make it at seven, because I'd love to go back down the same night, but if you can't, you can't. I'll just maybe leave after, if we're doing that.
Well, if, if you can be there.
I will be there.
Forum is three.
Yeah.
We can always, if you're okay with this, you start at seven, and you arrive at seven thirty, I don't know.
I don't, you set it up with the town, the town say, oh, you changed times on-
I haven't posted this yet.
Oh, okay.
Are we doing it at the twelfth still?
The twelfth, yeah.
So this would eliminate the thirteenth?
No, it wouldn't eliminate the thirteenth. So twelfth, we're going to hear, thirteenth, we're going to review decisions off of what we discuss.
And you guys will send me, he'll, Imai said he'd send me the decision, I can make comments and get it back.
Yeah, kind of same like you did tonight.
Okay, so we're changing the twelfth to seven PM, is that what you're saying?
That's okay.
Yeah, I mean, I might be able to make it.
Well, that would be great, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, that means so, so you, me, and Alicia.
Now, Steve's there.
I'm going to be there on the twelfth.
No, Steve, you're-
So I'll be there, I mean, I'll be there right at seven, but I'll be there.
No, everyone's there. Okay, oh, all right, good.
As everyone's.
But you have to change the invitation.
Yeah, so I'll update the invitation. But yeah, it's, I posted it, I posted it for seven.
I will not be there on the thirteenth.
But not here is good as being here, because you're going to get it.
So, but we start at seven.
Yeah, and then, so the Thursday one, I'm also planning on starting at seven.
Yeah, that one you already said.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, so both of them are seven?
So, no, both of them are seven o'clock.
Well, that's confusing now, they're both seven.
Is the Thursday one going to be short?
The Thursday one, the Thursday should be short, yes. I mean, we're just reviewing, kind of testimonies done, right, we should just be-
Yeah.
Now-
So we're, our comments are going to be more comprehensive than is typical in our forty B responses, because we've had the nice working groups, so.
Yeah.
We've got probably more detailed thoughts than we have in the past.
I think, yeah, I think so.
When you say you have the other meetings, are those compiled somewhere that we can take a look at them?
The other me-
You just said you have other meetings, I'm not-
We had offline working group meetings, with the developer, probably three or four of them.
Okay, are there any notes from there?
But, uh, here's, they'll, no, they don't have to review now.
Okay.
They, what they'll present to us, what we're asking them to present to us, is that very quickly the proposal is submitted, right? And then issue the concerns that they heard, either from the working group or the neighborhood meetings, and they're going to say, we took that all into account, and here's the revised, here's what's changed. So we're going to spend most of the time on the concerns and the new version of the proposal.
On the twelfth.
Got it.
On the twelfth, exactly.
And these offline meetings, who's been at these offline meetings?
Harvey, myself, Al, Imai, sometimes Leon, and sometimes John Field, and then the developer. So we've worked through a lot of issues, we've raised a lot of concerns, and we discussed a lot of mitigations.
Great.
So basically, what we're trying to do is we're trying to hand the ZBA a baton, as best as, yeah, so if they want to take it to Tom, run with it, that's great. But I think there's been a lot of improvement, we'll see.
Is there anybody else holding up this process before it goes to ZBA, or are we the last ones, or?
I hope you guys agree.
That's fantastic.
Well, I'll meet with various committees and boards.
Yeah, so tomorrow, they're, like, for example, tomorrow they're meeting with council on aging, they're presenting to the council on aging.
So hopefully, everybody's moving this process along.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
No one's foot dragging. Um, did you happen to be able to pass on the comments about solar?
No, I haven't, but I will, but I will.
Okay, all right. Because I agree with you.
And you're going to be there.
Yes, and I disagree, anything that get ahead of time, they can have a chance of two more.
Yeah.
I, I hope we can get through that meeting in two hours, but that will be a struggle.
That will be a struggle.
Yeah, this is a very tough meeting, and people do need to be-
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a big deal, it's Weston, you know, this is a-
People need to be-
Go time, my brother-in-law always says. And they're, I think, I think they're good guys, they listen, they're sharp, they understand, they responded, I mean, they can't make it, they can't meet all of our requests, but they can meet a lot of them, so. They're in the middle of trying to prioritize all that, and we're trying to help them prioritize.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, well, yeah, really, well, well.
Do, are, are, do we still need to have a conference call?
Uh, see, I thought it was just going to be the three of us, so that-
Right, so I'm not sure we still need to have-
No, let's just, let's just go with it then, let's just go with it.
Okay, um, yeah, and then-
But I'll tell Steve and Leslie, uh, we're going to need your architectural minds on this, you know.
Can't they get it home?
I'll find a way, you'll have to stay.
So they're, you know, a major issue is the visual impact from the rail trail, from the neighbors, and from Route twenty. And they have these site sections that are pretty thorough, they go all the way through the project from various points of view. But I'm not good at putting sort of a rendering together in my mind, therefore, what does that look like when you're standing in the neighbor's backyard, kind of thing.
You're not providing views from-
They're, they're trying to provide renderings, rough, I call them rough renderings, they're just massing things, they're not providing-
Right, we're not commenting on elevations or facades now, correct, or are we?
Just a minute, so, um, the, the renderings, like Boston Properties did for us, are, they hope to show how much of the mass you can see. Through the trees, and over the hill, kind of stuff.
Over the woods, grandmas.
So, right, so we're just trying to get a sense of that, so I'll certainly turn to you guys, if their renderings aren't there, and say, give us a description of what this is like, you know.
Yeah.
That would be good. People are very concerned, and I understand, I would be very concerned too.
Yeah.
But we're trying like heck to lower the elevation, right, of many of the buildings, increase the mounding, and then put buffering in place, where it's as, it minimizes the visual impact as much as possible. So we won't see it, we won't see all those ideas come together until our meeting, so it's kind of exciting for it to happen.
Imai, do you have the photos I sent you from the bridge, that you can pull up, do you can pull them up, I have a miracle?
Yes. Let's see.
That's okay, I'm going to squander the whole three minutes, cope. Are they going to be showing us elevations and facades, do you think, or just?
Yeah, I think they'll be showing us facades.
Yeah, I do, yeah, I believe they'll be sho-
If our attention on facades won't, I mean, the point of looking at facades is what's the impact on the neighbors, you know.
Right, right.
More so than, is that great architecture?
One thing I, I want to do is to, to talk about the landscaping theme versus what they showed us, where I remember seeing in the old images, was a sort of town green, open big green lawn with houses around it. I think it would be wonderful if they could do a more woodland-themed approach, especially considering all the walking, hiking, and riding trails in the area, and let them sort of work their way through the development. Such a development actually exists in Dedham, it's called the New Bridge on the Charles, it's partial assisted living, rehab, things to that effect. And it was done by a, it was done by Perkins Eastman, the buildings, and it's done in two thousand two, I think. And the landscaping was done by somebody called Geller, who was in the middle of this bought by Stan Tech.
Right.
I took a bunch of the pictures, it's really worth anybody taking a walk around. What's marvelous about it is they have four-story, very vertical buildings, which would be similar to our multi-story building, and they have planted right up to it, so you actually, when you're going right next to the building, you're in a lovely woodland pathway with, with trees, and it's got hummocks, and, and, um-
So Imai's looking for a picture of that?
Burns, or I sent a whole bunch of pictures-
I know you sent it today, but now when I search.
You know, I sent about six, you know, six or seven, I took a hundred pictures, but I sent him like eight or ten. Um, and I would really, it's twenty minutes from, from Weston, I would really suggest you go look, I'll, I'll take people on walks, um.
Well, I think they'd appreciate the suggestion.
So, I thought, yeah. I don't know, something I said literally just before I came here. Should be attached, anyways, right, take a look.
Anything else on the schedule, Imai?
So, yeah, projecting out, nineteenth is our regular meeting, twenty-fifth, we'll do a site visit for, um, Josiah Smith Tavern, we're doing the intake on that next week, so we'll finalize that.
So there's no sidewalk on the eighteenth?
No sidewalk on the eighteen.
But there is.
Who's going to host the Josiah Smith Tavern sidewalk? Do we know anybody?
I, I think we, we are familiar with the applicants, so.
I don't know, we better check out the credentials around here.
I'm, I'm like, I'm a great rigger to the side.
Yeah, exactly.
And the time of that will be what?
That one, we're going to, that's when I'm going to start moving back to the ten AMs.
Ten AMs?
Yeah.
Okay, so this really eliminates people like Steve.
Yeah.
It's not, yeah.
Yeah, but it was difficult for him to make it anyway, and he was always in a hurry.
Yeah.
But he gets able to make it, sometimes.
Sometimes.
And it's better for everyone else, because you don't have to deal with rush hour traffic.
Well, we'll try for a while. Well, we'll try for a while, if it doesn't work.
We'll try it.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's, it may not be the most wonderful time, but, but, right, good job.
It might be some.
Yeah.
Can we also at some point set up some long-distance goals, um, at one of these meetings to talk about what we really would like to do as far as site, you got that next?
Uh, this, this will come up.
Excellent.
Okay, September-
When I'm done.
Yeah, and then I just wanted to confirm if September fourth works for a meeting, that's the Wednesday right after Labor Day, if anybody's going to be away.
I'm not sure, I don't think so, but I'll check.
It works for me.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay. All right.
So we're taking August.
She means something different than that.
Yes.
Okay.
Nothing is happening in August, correct?
Nothing's happening in August, no, August is still off. So, yeah, this is where I try and check it with long-range goals.
Can we, Imai?
So twenty-fourth is the last.
Yeah.
So, uh, let's have, maybe every meeting, we have like a conversation, so the next conversation's going to be about site plan, right?
Yeah.
How about we have the meeting after that, we talk about the long-range stuff that we just brought up?
Okay. Okay.
Because it would be great to understand who, what, when, where.
We're just priority, the thing will be here.
Yeah, but also, I mean, for instance, I'm, I'm help, trying to, I'm trying to help have tag, treat bylaw, but I don't know who's working on the master plan for this group.
Oh, I see. Oh, good, that's good.
So everybody should, I, I would think everybody would want some kind of a champion.
Yeah, that's good.
You know, fly on the wall, whatever you want to call yourself.
Okay.
And the-
Disperse ourselves.
Yes.
Seven o'clock on Thursday starts in September, right?
No.
No, we're not doing that.
You mean, no, no, we didn't, no.
Oh, we're not doing that, okay?
We're not doing Thursday, because, yeah, we can't do it, so.
Okay.
We're just hoping that we can do like tonight, finish by nine thirty.
Yeah.
So we're going to keep it on Wednesdays?
Yeah, because Wednesday really needs work.
Seven thirty, or seven?
Yeah, right, seven thirty, couldn't change it.
Okay.
Well, you couldn't change to seven thirty, I mean, to seven, right, that was hard for you.
It was hard for me, I mean, once I finished this project, I'll, I'll be able to do it.
Okay, we can reexamine that, okay, that'd be good, that'd be good.
How long is the project going to take?
It's just a schluck into the Cape York Wednesday.
You're involved in a project?
Yeah, crazy.
Do you actually have a job?
Crazy.
Okay, so we revisit that one.
That's perfect, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, what would be really nice, if you make a list there, we can talk about who's gonna do what, and give some kind of a schedule to it, what's happening for our priorities.
Yeah, well, okay, yeah.
And goals that are happening. I mean, there are PA special permit is something, target a town meeting for this stuff.
Okay.
Cause otherwise, I keep, it's beautiful, but I have that feeling, I want it nailed down.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, this, this is kind of where they are.
Yeah, two weeks from now, we're gonna go over that.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect.
Okay, I did want you guys to take a look at this. This is a tree on one thirty-eight Summer Street, um.
It's hard to see.
This one in front of the, in front of this tree here.
I'm going to, I hope Jim's gonna get it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
All thanking Jim, I.
The owner here has expressed interest in taking this down.
Ends at Route twenty.
Um, and it's, the town, um, the contract arborist for DPW, who's actually gone through it on a tree survey, has said this is in poor condition, is a hazard, it should be removed.
What number of Summer Street is that?
One thirty-eight.
Where's Lilac House?
I don't know.
Is, is that, I just don't know, when you come off, when you come off Boston Post Road, how far down is it? Is it on the left or the right?
It is, if you're coming off Boston Post Road, it is on the left, it is, um.
Has it taken the, the turn before you go on, before you do that?
No, I think it's, if, I think if you're talking about that turn, it's after.
After the turn, so it's getting close to Lilac House.
So this is at one thirty-eight.
What's Lilac House?
That is a one, historic, I'm trying to say.
Okay, so one thirty-eight, um, Summer. And then this, so there it is, and there is a little tree, which tree is it?
Oh, the old people house.
So it's a tree right about here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I said, by the driveway.
Here's Cedar Road, yeah, it's right by the driveway.
Okay, so, did they, they call it the species? I assume it's an ash in decline?
Uh, no, actually, here, let me turn on the.
Can we just drive by and tell them?
Yeah, if you're just saying, I wanna go see how, in decline it is.
Let people see it, let people take a look at it, you want?
Okay.
That's what they're saying.
Okay.
And it's the one right by the driveway.
Yep, well, right by the driveway.
Excellent.
Are we done?
Sorry, one more thing I wanna worry about.
Okay, you'll have to pause it.
Okay. Um, one twenty-three Newton has asked to add two more lights to their garage, one on each side. Uh, they have two, two in the middle here. They're still under. It would be at fifteen nine forty-three if they added in two more of these.
Okay.
So.
So.
So they'll have four lights by their garage?
Yeah, does seem a lot, doesn't it?
Is one twenty-three the one that's under construction now?
It's under construction, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But can you say now, to the other ones? I mean, it seems excessive, but.
Are they the same as the two in the middle? Are they different?
They're the same as the two in the middle.
We're not the two. How much, how much, how much wattage, how bright are those lights, watt inch or?
Six seventy-five lumens.
Can you do it in watts? I'm sorry, old-fashioned.
Um.
Is it always just?
It's probably like sixty watt or less.
Yeah, I cannot do it by that watt.
So it's at one sixty watt, you think?
Well, no, each one is six hundred forty-three lumens.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's probably like two sixty watt bulbs.
Can it come and go in a lower wattage, or low, lower lumens? I mean, usually when you have a size, it'll come in different.
I, I would have to look up the, I'd have to look up the.